All right, everyone, welcome to the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls. It's 5:30 June 6th, 2020. Minnesota statute 13D dot 021 allows the meeting to be conducted by telephone or other electronics means under the following conditions. The mayor determined an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted under section 13D dot 02 is not practical due to the health pandemic. The mayor and all councilors participating in the meeting can hear one another and often hear the discussion. Attendance by the public is not feasible due to a health pandemic. At least one member of the city council is physically present at the regular meeting unless unfeasible to do due to the health pandemic. And all votes are conducted by roll call, so each member voting on each issue can be identified and recorded. The first item not on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Just a little brief reasoning on why we have not had the Pledge of Allegiance in the last handful of meetings. Since the pandemic started, it really came down to our city council meetings where just me and our city administrator in the room. It was a little bit of a weird awkward situation to do the Pledge of Allegiance with just the two of us with a vast majority of our people on the phone. So we have kept that off, but as we've been opening up more stuff and our council is at a full forum and we have people in our audience for the agenda, I think it makes perfect sense to start that up right after the Fourth of July weekend. So thank you for indulging me with the Pledge of Allegiance. The first item that is on our agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. There is an addition to the, oh, I guess there isn't. There was an addition to our agenda, which is the claim for services with the city attorney. That's going to be under our agreement of claims. Besides that, there's no other additions to go on to the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the additions. We have a motion by Councilor Deitch. We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Nelson?
Yes, and then I just want to tell you there's a really bad feedback from when, I don't know if your phone's next to the microphone. Actually, it's kind of gone now.
Okay, there's no phones in here. We only have one now.
It's better now.
Okay, good.
Aye.
So we have, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go on to the minutes of the Committee of the Whole of the June 1st meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes. We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have the minutes of the June 15th regular city council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Yes.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the special city council meeting on June 22nd. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I still move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second it even though I wasn't there.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Extant.
And I'll vote yes, four for the motion, zero against the motion, one abstention. Next, we have the payments of claims. To the 101 general fund from the 812 lodging tax fund, $577.50 for total transfers of Regular payment, accounts payable claims, City of International Falls regular claims, The city attorney charge of $9,736. Airport commission claims, $27,963.18. Phase 2 runway reconstruction project, $2,3564.55. And runway reconstruction phase 3 claims of $9,403.59. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. We have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, on the agenda, we have audience. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address the council for something that's not on the agenda? You would have to unmute yourself by hitting star six. All right, you also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to bring something up under audience. Next, we have the public hearing. Public hearing, we have a contract ordinance to award the bid for the library steam to hot water heating system conversion to Shannon's Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $214,400. Chair would entertain a motion for the contract ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deitch, Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
She said aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, old business. We have cold box loan delay in payment, Paul Nevinen. Do you want to come up or take the microphone?
Thank you for having me.
Make sure you take the microphone. That's the only way they can hear you.
I guess, okay. First, want to thank you for your partnership, due to your partnership with the county and KETA. We have three cold rooms at our test facility at the airport, which puts us in a really good position. The cold box loan that the city and the county provided was the local match to a deed grant back in 2016 that allowed us to build our third cold room specifically for a customer. We have made two payments. This was a 2% loan. We were paying on an annualized basis and we were tracking very well. And last year, we ran into some cash flow issues, the result of a number of things that are happening with some of our test customers. We do not, just for clarification, we do not get any direct funding from the city or the county. We have it for some time, over 10 years. We get 2/3 of our revenue to operate the office from our cold weather testing activity, so it's integral to what we do. We were tracking this year to make our third payment. We've made two earlier in the year. And unfortunately, this winter, we had three cancellations due to COVID. Three of our test customers, and then a fourth customer actually ended their activities early. So we lost considerable revenue, over $40,000, due to those cancellations. So with that and our cash flow issues, we would like to work with both the city and the county as we put our budget together to anticipate getting back on track and repaying that loan, but we are going to need some time. It's unfortunate now, we've even learned, one of our major customers has already canceled three of their planned test trips for this winter. The folks from Jaguar Land Rover are actually in a cot in a double bind because of the work visas issues. They're not going to be able to come into the country unless that can be amended. So right now, we're already seeing some effects. We're working with the rest of our customer base to get, to make some of those changes to our schedule and hopefully we can get back on track and continue paying off this loan. We hope to have it paid within three more installments. So I'm just asking the city and the county to work with us as we put our budget together, but do provide us some time to make these adjustments and repayments.
And Paul, this is, COVID only exasperated the issue because we actually knew that we were going to be having a problem going into this year earlier. So this is a little bit of a hiccup on top of a hiccup, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, it's a double whammy. And then I don't know to the extent to which COVID is going to affect some of our other customer base, but I'm just assuming that some will not be able to come here. But we won't have a better picture of that until early September, mid to early September.
So the goal is still to pay off the city and the county and Paul is just pushing it down the road a little bit?
Absolutely, yeah. We've done this before, we've made our payments, but again, due to some unforeseen events, it puts us in a very difficult position and we're trying to manage that cash flow. This has to carry the office through the entire year. We get some funding from the IRRB, but again, 2/3 of it comes from our test activities.
All right. So the council's thoughts in delaying the payment for the cold box?
It's the right thing to do.
Absolutely. So I would be looking for a motion to formally delay the payment of the cold box.
Question?
Please.
Do we have, I suppose we don't have a timeline at this time. It's just a matter of, let's just put it, okay. So yeah, I would move that we just delay the payment until Director Nevinen can present to us a timeline as to when it could happen.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to delay the loan. Discussion?
I just think we should maybe have some sort of date in there, just so we keep this on track.
Your thoughts?
I mean, whether it's like the end of the year, we just look at it again, or if it's the beginning of next year to look at it again, or I don't know when another installed payment would be due, that you could just use that date again?
Yeah, I would be happy to provide an update, say first meeting in November. I should have a good timeframe by then.
Okay, so that works. I don't think we have to delay the motion or to amend the motion, but yeah, we'll get an update in November. Sounds fantastic. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deitch? Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations on the deed grant, by the way.
Thank you. That was all of you. All right, next, we have the census timeline, July 13th through the 17th, the surge week for the 2020 census, self-response. Administrator Anderson, any information on that?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just for your information, again, as you mentioned, that the census timeline is making a transition from self-response to having people that have to do door-to-door visits in order to get the census count. So they've scheduled surge week, which is July 13th to the 17th, to really encourage everybody to make an all-out effort to try and, for those people that have not yet completed their census application, to try and do that. It's very easy to do online and there's a number of different events that are coming up. You might see some increased advertising. I heard Commissioner Adie on the radio this morning promoting the census on behalf of Kuchin County and everybody within the county. I did see some status or some data that indicated that at the end of the self-response in the 2010 census, we're at about 76% and we're at about 68% right now. So we're a little behind where we were at at the end of the self-response period in the last census. So we're really encouraging people to come forward and take the initiative to complete the census information. It's very easy to do and we're encouraging people to do that because if you do not, it will necessitate people to go door-to-door, starting in August and going through October, to try and get that information directly from homeowners. And we would like to not have to do that again because of the pandemic scenario that we're all experiencing right now.
All right, then we'll go to the consent agenda. Except, number one on the consent agenda is to accept separation from employment and retirement of Sergeant Grant de Benedict from the International Falls Police Department effective July 6th, 2020. Acknowledge police chief's promotion to Officer Dane Olson to patrol sergeant effective July 7th, 2020. Approve the police chief's recommendation to hire part-time officer Scott Worley to the full-time patrol officer vacancy effective July 21st, 2020. And to appoint Dylan Holt to temporary summer staff position to the Public Works Department. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. I know it's not formal to have any discussion on the consent agenda, but I just want to give huge praise to Sergeant Grant de Benedict for his time in service and I appreciate everything he's done and I also understand that he's making transition in his life to a different career, so sounds like a heck of a move. So just wanted to make that known, that we appreciate what he's given to the City of International Falls. With consent agenda, motion and second, I will call the question. Councilor Deitch? Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Councilor Nelson, did you vote yes? Okay, I see yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we'll go to new business, which is approve the subordination agreement for the Small Cities Development Program Housing Rehabilitation Deferred Loan Payment Agreement and Mortgage, because we make everything sound so simple and easy. Previously issued to Daniel and Debbie Griffiths to allow financing of the mortgage through Bremer Bank. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a formality. The Griffiths have applied to refinance their current mortgage and Bremer Bank has prepared the subordination for the city to take a second position. The city, working with Kutaska Community Action, had issued small cities grant funds to people for various improvements in the past. And so again, this is just to take a second position and requires approval of the subordination agreement as drafted in order to do that. So we're asking that the city council approve the subordination agreement and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to sign the subordination agreement.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deitch?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilor Kraus? Councilor Buller? Five zero. Next, we have consider road closure for the Elks, 11599 annual corn feed, corn and brat feed scheduled for Friday, August 14th, 2014, 2020, sorry. Tim McKay, come on up. Make sure you speak into the mic.
Is it on? Thank you, Harley and council members. My name is Tim McKay. I'm here tonight on behalf of the benevolent and protective order of Elks Lodge 1599 of International Falls. One of our yearly events is the corn and brat feed. We use that for raising funds for our youth scholarship program. And we are again asking for closure of the street in front of the Elks so we can use that as a venue to host the event. Now, we're quite aware of the government's, governor's regulations on this. And what we've done, or what I've done so far, is completed the permitting process and got the paperwork out on the appropriate desks. And what I'm asking, so that we can keep this moving along slowly, surely, is your authorization with the contingency that it is approved at the state level to go ahead and house the event in front of the lodge.
I, here's what we've done on other events that we've had in our community. We have approved all of them, but with the contingency of just not knowing where we're going to be at that particular time and place when the event goes on. So do you guys have a contingency to doing the event where you could have people just grab and go meals and stuff like that?
We've discussed that. We've discussed that and we've got time to work those kinds of things out, but we didn't feel that we had a lot of time with the permit process, getting it through the appropriate channels. So I just wanted to get everybody on board where we're at. That would of course be our preferred venue. It gives us the opportunity to social distance people a little more appropriately. Those tend to be big crowds and quite frankly, we count on those big crowds. It's 100% of this goes right back into the scholarship funds.
And one of the other things too, just a side note, with Labor Day picnic, the plan is to go about it as normal, but they are also set up to be able to do to-go boxes and stuff in the event that happens.
Yes. We'll have those available in conjunction. Either way, we'll have the to-gos.
So I guess the council's thoughts on approving so that they can continue the process to getting the road closure?
Here.
Yes?
Wonderful idea. I love the program. I would say we should go ahead with this.
Okay. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve their road closure.
I'll move.
We have a motion from Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. And so the motion is for the road closure and for them to allow the event, correct? I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Assuming that...
Assuming that there's...
Yep, of course. Perfect.
We are scheduled for August 14th. It's a Friday. If this happens outside, please come, join us, bring your wallets, because like I said, it all goes towards a good cause and it's good food. I would also ask one more favor of the council. And this again goes back to the outside venue. To assist us with the social distancing, we'd like to request a few more tables than what we have in the past, so we could spread people out even a little further.
That shouldn't be a problem. And we actually already have a policy in place. You just have to call the city and we can work that out.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to move forward with this pending any unforeseen COVID-19 blowout. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Is that sound coming from the computer? It's you, okay. I was wondering if there was feedback, because Councilor Nelson has sent me a text saying that she's experiencing extreme feedback on the, so, okay. Next, we have to consider the engineer and attorney comments on the final plat of the first edition to International Falls Business Park. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor, council. You have in your packet some information that we put together regarding the final plat for the first edition of the International Falls Business Park. And this was submitted to the staff by Dave Serrano. He's the surveyor working on behalf of KETA, which is the applicant moving forward with this particular final plat application. And for those who might not be familiar where this is located, it's essentially the properties around, or somewhat of a ring around 22nd Street, just east of Highway 53. There's some current development there and KETA had acquired some property through the tax forfeit process from Kuchin County. And the fringe properties around the existing road are being platted for resale and development. You can see from my cover memo that I'm suggesting that the document be updated with some of the comments that were provided by a surveyor, Garrett Barrowitz with Wiz Seth. And so he had some suggestions in his red line comments. And so I guess our suggestion is that we maybe table this for action at the next meeting. I think that's more important, given that I was advised this afternoon and at the end of last week by the city attorney, that the, there's an incorrect legal description in some of the title work that was submitted. And so Mr. Serrano contacted me this afternoon and suggested that this be delayed for action. I would be looking for some input from the city council if there's anything that you have any concerns with on the proposed plat application, that we could provide additional insight to the surveyor when he's preparing his modifications and corrections to the document before it comes back before the city council. I would also ask that the mayor give an opportunity for the city attorney to comment on any background information he might have for this particular application.
Council's, is the council okay with, does anyone have any comments or concerns with it before we move to table it? So if we have any concerns, we can move those as we go forward. All right, so then if the council so chooses, it would be my recommendation to table until our next meeting so we can get some of the stuff finalized that the city administrator had just pointed out.
Let's move the table.
Okay, we have a motion to table from Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by all three of the other city councilors. We'll give it to Councilor Nelson. She had farther to go. So we have a motion and a second to table to our next city council meeting. Any discussion? City Attorney, did you have something to add on this?
Well, I would just agree with City Administrator Anderson that it's not ready to go forward at the present time and hopefully either by the next meeting or the first meeting in August, we'd be able to go ahead because there are several issues that need to be resolved. It's close, but not quite there yet.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Councilor Deitch? Councilor Nelson?
Oh, aye. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we, five zero, and I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have to approve the amendment 01 to the State Minnesota Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract. Is this is part of the CARES Act? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Ken, can you give us a little background on it?
Yes, Mayor.
And, um, there was a formula used for the contributions that would be made to various airports. Um, the joint airport that's operated by the City of International Falls and Koochichin County was awarded as much, well, $1,070,873 through the CARES Act. And that money can be used essentially for, um, eligible telecommunications maintenance and operation costs that would be incurred by, um, the airport moving forward. My recollection is that, um, the act actually authorized those funds to be spent sometime over the next four years. This particular agreement, I think, is limited to two years, but that could be amended and extended. But this is a standard form that was prepared by the Minnesota Department of Transportation, Office of Aeronautics. And again, it awards, uh, the amount to the Koochichin and International Falls Airport Commission, the amount of $1,070,873 for maintenance and operations costs essentially.
So, just, just to have a question, since we're the fiscal sponsor of, of the airport, does that mean that this money gets deposited to the City of International Falls in a direct account, or in a, um, a dedicated account?
Uh, Mayor, I'm not a hundred percent certain how the CARES Act funds are dispersed for airports. Uh, typically, the FAA or, or federal programs are reimbursement program. That was my understanding for this. However, later, I'm going to talk a little bit about the CARES Act monies that the state is distributing and that were awarded by Governor Walz, and those are going to be direct deposits, if you will, to our account. Um, but they have to be spent on very, um, well-documented eligible costs, and any costs that you don't spend have to be given back. So with this, I believe it's a, a reimbursement basis. And so if you look at section 5.12, it talks about federal funds reimbursement basis, and it has to go to a hundred percent federally eligible expenses. But I don't know that those monies are deposited to us directly. I think they have to be reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, uh, for the city administrator in regards to the Airport Maintenance CARES Act? The Chair would, uh, Chair would accept a motion to approve the amendment?
I so move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
I will vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we have approve the business license name change from Apple Green Midwest LLC doing business as Freedom Value 61 and Apple Green Midwest LLC doing business as Freedom Value Number Two, to Apple Green Midwest LLC doing business as Express Lane 2325 and Apple Green Midwest LLC doing business as Apple Green, uh, or I'm sorry, Express Lane 2337. Chair would entertain a motion to make those changes.
So move.
So we have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we have to approve, uh, a two-year software support schedule and Frontier Voice Maintenance Schedule. Uh, Todd? Do you have any background on this you want to give us?
I have background.
Yeah. Go in the microphone.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, City Council. Um, I discovered, uh, not too long ago that our last, uh, maintenance contract had expired in, I believe, the fall or summer of 2018. So, uh, that means that if the main phone system here has a problem, you know, we have to pay for an hourly rate, which is really high. And also, as the equipment gets older, um, it would be a great expense to replace it. Whereas with this contract, the Frontier will have to replace anything that goes bad. So, um, we do, I feel we need a contract to cover maintenance, and I went with a 24-by-7 plan just because it's, it's critical for the fire department and, uh, EMTs to have that, you know, phone system running. Although we do have a backup analog line, but, anyway, so that's the background.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I think we actually had a problem where the phones went down and that's how we found out, isn't it?
Um, you're talking about the flood, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I had...
Don't throw money to the boss. Nice catch.
No, I, I had found out about, I'd actually found out about it, about a week or two, so before the flood. Unfortunately, the, uh, we're not getting the contract signed, uh, we can't, we don't have time travel, so it won't help with that, but...
Fair enough. All right. So Chair would entertain a motion to approve the two-years software, uh, contracts.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler.
Stay there.
Do you want more food?
No, I already sent it, I only sent it once.
Forgot it twice.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question. Councilor Deech?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, uh, Human Resource Committee Recommendation to Approve Public Works Supervisor Job Description and Authorize, uh, Advertising to Fill the Vacancy. Councilor Nelson, do you want to, uh, give a, a brief, um, background on, on the Human Resource Meeting that we got to this?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so at the meeting, um, Ken, as well as Commissioner, um, actually Department, uh, Public Works Director Ted Brokaw, um, put together a, um, job description and basically what would be included in a posting for the, the vacancy. Um, and from my understanding of the meeting is it'll be, um, Ted Brokaw at the top. The supervisor will be kind of in the middle, um, that basically assists, um, Ted with his job, um, and it's kind of the boots-on-the-ground, um, position of it. And they discussed, we discussed the potential salary range and, um, everything looked good. So we brought the recommendation. I don't know if Walt or, um, Ted wants to add anything.
Well, thank you. Um, Administrator Anderson, do you have anything to add, or Councilor Bowler?
I would just, uh, comment that it's an important position for us to provide some assistance as, uh, the council is very well aware and the public will be more so in the future here. We have a number of infrastructure improvement projects that are underway with the Highway 53 reconstruction, the local 2020 street improvement projects that we'll be doing this summer through contracts that have already been awarded, as well as a considerable or a comparable amount of local streets being done in 2021. So, uh, this, this person in this position is going to be essential to provide the, um, management and oversight necessary to manage those projects and, uh, provide some relief for the Public Works Director, as Councilor Nelson had mentioned. And, uh, I, I would just point out that we've identified a fairly aggressive process to still give, uh, three to four weeks for people to submit applications, but it's our hope that we can, uh, have a recommended candidate for consideration by the city council for appointment by September 8th.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, Public Works, uh, Chair, do you have anything to add?
No, I think, uh, Chelsea said it pretty clear, they need, we need somebody with boots on the ground to be able to with the bags. And I think the way this job description's written, I think it's going to be very helpful to Ted, uh, in, in doing his job better. So, uh, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good, very good, important position to have.
Okay. So, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to, um, approve the recommendation to, um, publish for a public works supervisor job description and authorize the advertising.
I so move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second?
She melted.
Okay. Councilor Nelson, you get the second. All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Any, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we have, uh, approve the order in a matter of hazardous house, which is 911th Street. Um, it's, uh, William Bradburn. Uh, City Attorney, can you walk us through this? Uh, we can't hear you. There we go.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, this property had a fire, uh, back in 2018. Uh, it's never been repaired. Uh, there've been communications with the owner, uh, and they've, uh, uh, basically ignored that, uh, so, uh, in accordance with Minnesota statutes, uh, I was submitted, uh, an order to the council requesting that you approve it. The process is, uh, if this is approved by the city, we then serve it on the owner and file, uh, the order with the district court. Uh, they then have, uh, 20 days to, uh, interpose an answer to the order. If they don't, uh, make any appearance, which is typically what happens, uh, then, uh, the district court, after a hearing, will allow us to go in, uh, and, uh, tear down the building, uh, under the demolition, uh, uh, program, uh, and, uh, that's the end of it. If they, uh, choose to, uh, contest it, then they have, uh, uh, up to 60 days, uh, to get everything done. Uh, but typically, they do not. So, uh, I would ask the, uh, council to approve this, and then I'll take steps to have it served on the owner, uh, and filed in district court.
Steve, in the event that they, uh, they get served and they do not, uh, they don't fight it and it becomes the city's, uh, position to tear it down? If the building hasn't been, uh, hasn't been cleared and there's still, uh, belongings and, and such in there, how is the city handling that? And does that just all go to the dump as well, or? And since it was a fire, it has to go to hazardous, correct? So how, how do we handle that?
Yeah. The city crew, uh, goes in, uh, and removes the personal property first, uh, gets rid of any property that, uh, wouldn't, uh, go, uh, into the hazardous building stuff. So it's actually a, a two-step process, uh, as it is with, with all, uh, demolitions. Uh, before there's a demolition, uh, we remove those items, the city removes those items that would not be, uh, appropriate, uh, for the demolition site, uh, and those would, uh, be disposed of, uh, uh, through the, uh, usual, uh, facility.
Okay. Thank you. So the Chair would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the order in the hazardous house of, uh, 911th Street.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion?
Question, Mayor. Who pays for the removal? Does that go on taxes, or do we get the property?
Yeah, we, uh, we have the, uh, ability to submit, uh, a, uh, following the, the demolition, we can, uh, submit, uh, to the court, uh, a list of expenses and then those can be, uh, certified, uh, to be added to the, uh, tax roll, uh, for the property.
Thank you.
And, and Steve, so I guess that, that is a, a good follow-up to that question. If, um, if they get put on the tax rolls and they haven't, uh, they haven't done anything with the house in two years, and now we're assessing the property to the taxes, which I assume, and this is an assumption and it's no disrespect to the homeowner, it could be in any case, the taxes don't get paid. When it goes up for tax forfeiture, does the city get an opportunity at that property, or does it go directly to the state and then it, it's owned by the county? I mean, how does, how does that work? Because that is a beautiful lot on 11th Street that would be desirable for someone to build, and that's one of the issues that we have in our community, is we don't have people building on good properties.
Well, we do not, uh, uh, as a matter of right, uh, have the ability, uh, to, uh, acquire that property before it goes forfeit, uh, although, you know, if we wanted to, we could certainly, uh, if that was happening, if it was going forfeit, we could deal with the owner to try to come up with, uh, some kind of method to do that. I, I do agree, that's a great corner lot.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a scary neighborhood, though.
Yeah, this next to, uh, two of our city councilors, so I'd be a little concerned. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the order to, um, uh, order, I'm sorry, to approve, um, the order in the matter of the hazardous house. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next, we have, uh, award the quote for installing a flammable waste trap at the Second Street Garage to Shannon's Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $36,800 payable from the general government buildings, capital outlay. Chair would entertain a motion, uh, for, for that.
I so move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Can, can somebody just explain to me what a flammable waste trap installation for the drain relocation? I, I don't understand it.
What it is, um, right now, the floor drains drain into the, uh, sewer.
Yep.
What this is, it's a, I mean, the ones I've seen go in the past, anyway, are a big tank that they'll put into the ground where the drainage will go into there first, and then the sediment from the oils and stuff will settle on the top of it, and then it goes out the bottom. So it'll, it'll trap your flammable, keep your flammable fluids that are, that will from going down the drain.
Down the, down the sewer, or storm sewer, actually.
It also collects, it also collects, uh, silt and, and, you know, stuff like that too, but otherwise, it's, it's mainly for your flammable materials that they don't go down and get into our sewer system.
Great. That, that, that's way better, because I thought there was something actually going to be flaming, and I couldn't figure out what we were doing with that at the city garage.
We put it in the county garage when we built that new garage right next, uh, shop right next to the garage there, and watched and put it in.
Worked out well?
Yes.
Great. All right. So we have a motion and a second to award that quote of $36,800 to Shannon's Plumbing and Heating. I'll call the question.
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries 5-0. Any other business to come before the city council? All right. Then we'll go to the reports of the administrator, attorney, and department heads. City Attorney? You're on, you're on mute again.
On mute. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. You've all got, uh, the detailed report that's, uh, in your packet that's been prepared by, uh, Chief Manasseh and Jared Baldwin. Uh, been working, uh, everybody's been working very diligently, uh, over the last, uh, three or four weeks, uh, on this. Uh, I meet with Jared, uh, probably, uh, every other day at least, sometimes several times a day, going through these things. Uh, as you can see, uh, there've been, uh, since June 1st, 220 properties noticed, uh, about various violations. Um, one of the, uh, and with regard to the, most of them are grass, uh, but with regard to the vehicles, uh, which is, uh, the attachment at the end, there's actually been a hundred different properties where there were issues with, uh, junk or unlicensed vehicles. Of those, uh, somewhat over 30 have been corrected since they were notified. Um, the, the process as we've done, uh, with grass over the years is first to, uh, put a tag, uh, on the home, uh, to give them notice, uh, and then, uh, at the last council meeting, uh, uh, the, uh, well, it might even have been two council meetings, uh, ago, uh, determination was made, uh, to, uh, proceed to criminal violations, citations to the property owners if these weren't corrected. Um, under our statute, before we can have a criminal violation, we need to either, uh, have personal... Under our statute, before we can have a criminal violation, we need to either have personal service on the owner or occupant or provide certified mail. And on June 30th, there were, I think, 32 certified mail notices of the violations that went out to owners that had not removed the problem. Since then, I think about 10 of those that were sent certified mail on June 30th have been now corrected. A couple of them are in process and they're making progress, so slight extension has been provided. And on those where there's extensions, Jared's checking back in weekly to make sure that progress is being made and things are happening. Those will now be rechecked later this week to see if they've complied with the seven-day requirement, and if they haven't, then we will begin issuing citations or criminal complaints against those who have not violated. So, those initial citations are likely to be coming out later this week. And so, at the meeting two weeks from today, we'll be able to report back what kind of impact that has had. Also, I think in the report, it indicates that 10 of the properties have been turned over to my office for handling, with detailed information and photographs and everything of those 10 properties. One is the Bradburn property that we just did an order on today. There's another one of those 10 properties where it involves a building, a blighted building, and we've gotten verbal indication from the owner that they're willing to proceed through our demolition process, but they haven't completed the paperwork. And if they don't complete the paperwork to do a voluntary demolition before the next council meeting, at that meeting two weeks from today, I'll be presenting a similar order to the one we presented today to go to district court and get a removal. And once we do that, it's been the policy of the council, once we have to do the order, we then no longer give them the option of going voluntarily to the demolition program. We require it to be torn down and the cost assessed back to the property. That's about it. I met earlier today with Chief Manasseh and Jared Baldwin to go through all these, and I think we're making good progress. You never realize until you total them all up how many different properties there are that are violating our ordinance, but we're certainly moving in the right direction, and I think the community's aware. There's been some publicity, and word is out there that they can't just keep ignoring it, and some of these vehicles have been there for many years. Happy to take any questions that anybody has.
Please, I don't have a question, but I want to thank the Chief, Chief Manasseh, Jared Baldwin, and our city attorney. This last two weeks, I drive around constantly. This last two weeks, I've seen great improvements. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, you're welcome. The thanks really goes, I think Jared's been the one putting in all the extra time on this, and it's a time-consuming process, but it's well worthwhile.
You know, I think that the deal with blight is just a level of where we want our community to be. I know there's people that are frustrated that the city's coming down, and, you know, it's not a level of coming down. I mean, I think my property is actually a pretty nice property, and I got blighted as well. I had a trailer on, my vehicle that I drove here today was broken down, my tire blew, and I violently hit a curb. I was not texting and driving or anything. I wasn't, I promise. I actually took a turn too close, and the window fell out of my window, too. So, I had my vehicle on a flatbed with the tire blown and a bag over the window, and I never in a million years would have expected that I had gotten a blight ticket, but sure enough, just like everybody else, and it was a seven-day notice. I think that's the one thing that we all get bent out of shape about, is these aren't really tickets. These are warnings that people are getting. You have seven days to correct the problem before it becomes a ticket. So, I, it's just one of those things. I think we're trying to, everything our power on the city council to upgrade our community with what we're doing with our streets and roads and our community, and we're just trying to raise the level, because if we want people to come here and vacation and see our community, we have to show them that we are a clean community, we have to show them that we care and we take care of stuff, and that's how we're going to get people to move to our area. That's how we're going to have people invest in our community. So, I appreciate everything that you guys have been doing on this. I think it's fantastic. The phone calls get to be a little bit much, but they're for the right reasons, so I get it. Do you have anything else, City Attorney, other than just the blight?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Moving on the blight?
I was just going to say, next we have Fire Chief and Housing Inspector Blight report. Do you have any?
Uh, no, I think City Attorney should be able to sum it up very well. I guess the only thing I'd like to acknowledge was Mr. Baldwin's done a next big job and put the time into it. I think it just shows how much time goes into making this process work, so I appreciate this time and effort in, along with the summer employee in the fire department, Ms. Walls. Fox, she has done a wonderful job as well, and it will work through the heart, so hopefully it's showing.
It definitely is. And that's one of the other things, too. Like, when people tell me, "My neighbor has a horrible yard. Why aren't they doing anything to them?" And I've answered it like this, and I think that this is probably the most realistic thing. Just because your neighbor hasn't posted it on Facebook does not mean they have not gotten a warning. Some people are trying to handle it without making a big deal of it, and other people want to make a big deal out of it. So, the reality is, we're all in this together, and we're just trying to clean up our community. Reports of the administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One is the, I would let the council know that I submitted a certification form today to the Minnesota Department of Revenue, and that certification form will allow us to be eligible for disbursement of the CARES Act monies that we had talked a little bit about before. So, Governor Walz had appropriated monies that the federal government has provided to the state, and it's based on a per capita sum, and it's just over $75 per capita. So, we're going to be getting about $462,000 in monies that have to be spent on COVID-related expenses that we have. And so, the first step in that process is to submit the certification form, so I did that today, and then we'll be looking and exploring at ways that we can spend those monies on any and all COVID-related projects. And some of that might be to reimburse expenses that the city's incurred because of COVID-19 in some areas, and again, this has to be explored, but we can look at grant programs to assist businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19 and the downturn in business. So, we're going to be exploring options going forward, and I just wanted to make the council aware of that. Secondly, and related to the topic of COVID, I do want to disclose, and I provided an email today to the council, but I was advised over the holiday weekend that one of our employees was symptomatic, did reach out and sought medical care, and they did test positive for COVID-19 again over the weekend. So, the employee was directed by the medical care provider to quarantine for 10 days, and I just want to make the public and the council aware that we are continuing to emphasize cleaning protocols and all best practices in city operations to make sure that we're properly sanitizing our facilities and our equipment, and we're doing whatever we can in our city operations to avoid additional positive cases. I do want to point out that we're seeing an uptick in a lot of states, particularly in the southern portion of the country, but state and national public health officials are emphasizing the need to wear masks and to do that, particularly when indoors and social distancing cannot be observed. So, we're trying to emphasize that with our staff and appreciate the council observing that as well. My mask broke already today, so I have to get another one, so that's why I'm not wearing mine. But I think that's good practice, and we want to try and emphasize that. So, I appreciate any work that the staff is taking to try and protect themselves, their families, and their coworkers, and the council for setting a good example. So, I wanted the council to be aware of that, and I will leave some other business for the mayor to disclose going forward.
[laughing] That's funny. All right. Any department heads have anything to bring up? Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
One more minor question before we roll on and going back to the blight log here. What is the yellow for?
I don't know the answer to that.
Mayor, I can answer that.
Oh, please.
There's a couple of line items where it's highlighted in yellow, and that's where the staff have had conversations with the property owners and have granted an extension to the seven-day initial timeframe for whatever reason. They needed more time to clean up or something, but those are the properties where they had worked cooperatively with the property owner to have a time extension.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? I've just, I've got a question. I was contacted by an individual that was able to take care of this, but one thing that they did note is the limited hours at the dump, they had brush, and they were having a difficult time where it would line up with their work schedule. They worked full-time during the week and were unable to get over there at those times. So, I would assume that there are some accommodations that are being made for individuals that bring that kind of stuff up?
That's been a challenge. I was made aware of that starting today, I believe, with some fully operational, normal hours that they have, and so that has been a challenge.
Yeah, because they worked straight days, and I think that, for whatever reason, it was, they were only taking brush at certain times during the week, and he said, "How do I, how do I get there? I've got to be at work."
Everything, I mean.
Right.
It was a tough situation to deal with.
I think he, I think he was able to get it cleaned up, but I appreciate that you guys are working with him, because it was, that was a challenge that was pointed out to me.
Yeah, there was, there was a business owner that made it pretty clear that he had a problem with the dump being closed, too.
Just to answer that challenge, though, if you're working five days a week, it was open Saturday morning.
Right.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday it was open. So, Saturday morning it was still open, but now it is, oh, normal hours.
Right. Yep. All right. Anything else for the department heads or city attorney or city administrator? Hearing none, we'll go to mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Does anybody have anything to bring up? I have a whole bunch, but it won't keep us here past seven. Okay, so, the first thing is, I was contacted by a resident who got a ticket for having chickens inside the city. He was frustrated because he had seen that the city council had it on our agenda in the beginning of March or early April about having chickens. At that time, he thought that the council was moving forward with allowing chickens in the city, so he did buy chickens to put in and set up. He, he was questioning why we did not go forward, and I said that there was not a lot of members of our staff that felt that that was a good idea. The city council had discussed it, it failed on a five-zero vote, and this is not the first time that it came up. It's come up over and over again, and there was a piece of our comprehensive plan that was regarding chickens and asking people in the community if they felt we should have chickens, and a vast majority of the people there said no. So, he asked me how he could go about putting it to the voters, so I explained to him the process and I helped him with the process. So, there is a petition going around International Falls to try to get 138 signatures to put on the November ballot, should the chicken, or should the chickens allow the city, should the city allow chickens, using essentially the draft ordinance similar to what they have in Duluth. It is, it is my feeling that since it does come up three, four times, I think it does make sense to put it to the voters. I also feel that it is probably not going to pass, but I'm not for or against it. I want the voters to take a look at it and make their own decision on that. But I do want you guys all to know that I did help with that petition. I am not pro-chicken, I'm not anti-chicken, but I am pro-moving forward in diplomatic manner, and this is the next, the next process that would have to happen, because I don't feel the city council should have to take up the chicken issue again, and if it goes to a vote and it gets passed or failed, we can just move forward and have the chickens in the rearview mirror. Next, I have, I received today a letter that the city council all has received. We had applied for a grant for 22nd Street to do the road for the business park, and we were approved $349,011 to put towards that program. I worked, I talked very briefly today to the Public Works Director. There is going to be some, some work that can get started on it this year, whether it's stabilization, I don't know the specifics of it, but it sounds like there will be work done this year, and in 2021, it can be blacktopped. So, we will go to him for more information on that particular thing, and I had one more thing. I forgot what it was. So, those are the only two things that I have. Oh, I did have one more thing. So, after the last council meeting, we did, we did approve for publication for the property for the alley vacation. Because it is a public, it is a public hearing, I would appreciate, in the event that anyone talks to our council about that, listen to their concerns, don't give them your feelings one way or another. We want to have a fair and impartial moving forward to that process. There is no, there is no qualms about it. The history is, the city did tear down that building, and that's in the past. So, when we move forward, I want to make sure that everyone is paying attention to what the project is and how we move forward with that. So, please, take input from the community and keep an open mind as we move forward on that particular project, because I have gotten bombarded with questions on that, and I just listen to what people have to say and just move forward. I have nothing else. Is there any other council committees, boards, or commissions? Oh, I have one more thing. The Charter Commission met last month, and they did not have a quorum. Since we, since we put new people on, we have gotten a really, really good mix of about seven or eight people that do show up every single meeting, but you need eight people for every single meeting. Now, from who we appointed in January and who was already on the board from the previous appointments, each one of them have about three or four people that are showing up at these meetings and taking part. We spoke with, I spoke with the chair of the board, which is Pete Kaler. Him and I had a discussion about how can we lower that number, and I reached out to the city admin, or city attorney, and he said that it is a fairly simple process. All we have to do is, at the Charter Commission, the next meeting, they have to vote that they want to lower their amount of people that are on the Charter Commission. At that point, we can ask the people that have not been attending, which we've had two people that were recently appointed that have never attended a meeting, and they've met every month. So, I think we can lower that number, and what the fears of both the Charter Commission and myself, after listening to Commissioner Kaler talk about it, is we have some young people and we have some, some people, young is in, new to the commission, and we have some older people that have been on the commission for a long time, that really want in and to dig deep into this charter and really do work. But it's frustrating when you show up and you take an hour out of your month to do the work and no one shows up and you can't finish anything. So, it's our, it's our, it's his intention, and I back his decision, to see if we can't lower the amount of people on the Charter Commission, so we really can move forward with the changes that we're asking for. with the changes that we're asking for. So that's the one I almost wrote down, but I forgot to write down. So that's all I have. So I just wanted to give you guys an update of what's going on on the Charter Commission, too. With that, we will open up for audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to bring something to the council's All right. Hearing none, we will have our next regular city council meeting on July 20th at 5:30 PM. There is a public hearing, which I did reference, on Monday, July 27th, 2020, at 5:30. Oh, our next committee of the whole meeting would be Tuesday, or Monday at, what time? Four?
Yep.
Monday at four. All right, with no other business to come before us, this meeting is adjourned.